Start of August.
Here.
Carry your word.
Here.
Any more left?
Here.
Any more for?
Here.
Need more?
Here.
Alright, discussion.
Budget reduction. Alright, budget reduction round two. You all should have a handout with a proposed plan for you. Let me just walk you through that real quick. Figure up on the top that 235,000, that is our grand total target. That is $200,000 that we knew we had to reduce. And then that also includes the full-time sub. We were having two, however, remember, one of them resigned. And so this has that one full-time sub built in for a total target of 235. At your last meeting, you made reductions of 168, 179. So that means you still have almost 67,000 to do in order to make that 235,000 target. Okay? The one that stuck on the top was on your list for last time again proposing to eliminate the maintenance director and shift those duties to the current custodial staff. That shows you what that projected savings would be. By doing that, you reach your target. You will, I think you're like 4,000, 5,000 over your target amount. However, if you want to look at some further reductions to build the cushion, for example, we know that we're gonna have an insurance increase and that the district is gonna have to be responsible for. There are some other things that we think we could comfortably do down on the bottom. Brandon has some of these that he recommended. I'll read through them and Brandon, if you have anything you want to add on, just come right in. We think we could eliminate show choir contract with not having a vocal teacher. There's really no need to have that liability out there for us. Proposal to eliminate Quiz Bowl and my understanding is that the activity would not go away. It would simply be incorporated into the current tag program rather than being a separate extracurricular activity. Okay? Brandon has also talked to Jane about the possibility of eliminating large group speech. Still holding on to the individual speech. Participation numbers in large group speech are really down statewide, not only Woffalo. But you have talked to Jane and that's a change she's okay with.
Yeah, she said that, you know, it gets harder and harder to get enough kids to do group, but she did have an increase in kids for individual this year or for speech in general. I think the previous year, I think we had two kids. This year we were eight or nine total. So the numbers obviously increased with Jane coming back on as a speech coach and she agreed that getting rid of group speech was not a problem, but you know, obviously shifting her focus to individual.
Well, onto the individual. We're also proposing to eliminate a high school assistant track coach. We think that we could cover everything fine with one less person there. We also think we could eliminate a junior high track coach. And then also we could eliminate the assistant marching band position. And you've talked to Jennifer about that.
I did.
And she's okay?
She said she didn't see it being a problem.
Okay.
And we currently have someone who, usually our choir person will do that and obviously we didn't have somebody. So Joe's been volunteering for two years. When I went to Mike and Eric last year and said, hey, you know, we don't have somebody. Joe's doing this and we're hiring for this position. Joe really didn't expect that to happen. So Joe said, regardless if I'm getting paid or not, I'm still gonna spend my time volunteering and I don't see why you wouldn't, basically why you wouldn't do that. So, you know, it's not gonna deter Joe from helping marching band.
And Jennifer doesn't think it's gonna have a detrimental effect on the program, so, okay? And the last two things on the list are things that were mentioned at our last budget workshop meeting. I have them for you. Proposal is to not hire student custodial and summer help. That is what we spent on student custodial help last year. We hired three students and that's what you paid. There was also discussion of having our current staff handle the summer mowing rather than contracting that out. And that's our estimated savings on that. Okay? If you did everything down there in the cushion area, that would hit you with an additional 30,690 in reductions. You don't have to do all of those. I put them on there so that you have some things to think about if you want to cushion. Also, you know that Bill Dunham submitted his resignation. I've been talking to Kelsey about can we absorb that position with current staff? And I've been told that yes, we would be able to absorb that position. So that's a savings that isn't reflected on here, but keep that in the back of your mind as well, that we'll be looking to fill that position without having to hire.
So how does that, I mean, what are you, what would she be absorbing there exactly? Or what would the?
Kelsey, give me a thought.
So there's nothing positive you can do with that, whether you hire somebody back, whether you make our current business teacher full-time, but that if he's interested in that, we would, do you probably have, like, if it was something where our current half-time business would go full-time to do half and half, then I would propose that younger level classes or classes geared towards our freshmen and sophomores, they would be taken in-house and then we end college classes in the upper levels to complete our strands, get our CTE certification that way, so you'll have that time. Plus with Tasciana, we can also use some of her. She's certified to do like some engine for ag in her own certification. So it'll get covered across probably three different departments.
So the offerings will still be there for kids?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to look. I haven't talked to the kids yet.
That would be my big concern is just that.
Right.
We don't want. What the offerings would be if there's, you know, for some of these kids that that's important.
And we can't have the program go away because we're needed as part of our CTE strings.
Yeah.
What's the total cost benefits for this position?
Oh, for Dunham? Yeah. Well, we would have to make Michael Horton full-time, so we wouldn't save that whole amount.
Right.
But we certainly wouldn't be hiring a full-time person.
And some of this 71,074 dollars, I mean, we're gonna have to.
That's what I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're gonna have to distribute that towards.
My only question on that is what are we distributing for custodial versus what maintenance is versus what custodial? So custodial, I mean, as far as the clean water, I mean, they should already be, in my opinion, I mean, they should already be doing things like changing light bulbs and things like that anyway. So I don't know what.
Where you draw the line?
Where, yeah, what is, what are they gonna actually have time to do or what are they capable of doing when it comes to maintenance, I guess? I would kinda like to know what the duties would be before we come up with a dollar amount because I, you know, especially if we're gonna eliminate this position, which is fine, that means we're going to be hiring people to come in and do some of these things. So, you know, that's, it's gotta be done, one way or the other.
Right.
Some of the things have to be done, but we have to, I kinda like to know what we're expecting.
I did ask for a quote to go through.
Yep.
I can't remember the number on it.
We got, I did some exploratory calling that followed down HVAC service contracts and we got some numbers on that. You know, a lot of the work that we would have to contract out could be paid not with general fund dollars. Could be paid with, say, it could be, well, it would be safe not pebble because our pebble is spoken for. You know?
Probably not in doing those contracts. I just, like I said, I wanna go through those. I wanna know which ones, those two times a year. But once again, with maintenance.
Yep.
There's only so much your outside contractor is gonna do. That stuff is a need, but there's things that are fixing repairs that are just into school and what are our custodians.
And I have, I've sat down with.
With their timeframe.
The custodial staff and I've said, alright, we're toying with this idea. What do you think this could look like? And their thought, at least what they told me, was that they think that as a team, they would be able to handle everything.
I mean, I'm, I'd just like to know what there because I know this has been done in the past when we didn't have somebody and it doesn't always work as what you think it's going to. Because now you're getting away from doing their actual duties and trying to, and things are gonna fall behind.
You're asking, so you're asking for the job test.
Yep.
Job descriptions.
And you're not gonna be asked to make a decision on this until April 17th, so by then, absolutely.
I just, yeah, we're gonna do this. I just would like to know the duties as far as what we were gonna expect of them because we don't wanna overload them and expect them to do some things that they're not gonna be capable of.
Absolutely.
But there are some things that the director does, you know, when it comes to, I'm assuming, you know, getting quotes and bids and we want three bids on this and doing the scope of work stuff. Is that gonna fall your way, I would assume? Or how are we gonna handle that?
Those are decisions that we would have.
And I would propose if we're going to eliminate that position, that we would keep our summer help.
Yeah, and I would like to keep the mowing too.
And not do the mowing. I would take the mowing and the summer help off.
He's, he'll lock everything off at one time.
Right, yeah.
Coaching positions.
If you're taking this off.
Coaching positions, so everything on that list except for your bottom two, summer help and currents in the mowing, do those need to be negotiated? Are those part of the master contract or?
The speech right now is listed as one contract, so we would negotiate that down to half, but that shouldn't be an issue. And the rest, you know, the specific numbers of coaches are not in the contract.
So what it'll say is a coach and then a percentage, but it doesn't say how many for each sport.
Right.
And I would, I would add to that, right?
Yeah, there is a, there is show choir, quiz bowl. Speech you can negotiate down. I don't know if it's spelled out, assistant track coaches or marching band.
And I would say that if, on my list of things, if there was one I could save, I'd like to save one high school track coach. And the reason is, if the boys and girls go to different places on the same night, I would like to have two coaches with each team.
So you don't wanna eliminate this high school track coach?
That would be the one, if I have, if there's one I can save, that'd be the one I'd wanna save.
Do, are these all positions that are filled today that we've paid this year?
Yes, no.
With this budget?
Quiz bowl's filled, speech is filled, junior high track is filled, high school track is filled, marching band is filled this year, show choir is not.
So really the 797 is really the only thing that we have that technically paid out in our current year?
Correct. Yes.
I would say I want to pursue, like, maybe there, want to pursue the eliminating maintenance director.
Okay.
I wouldn't, so, I would be.
Okay.
I mean, it's a big hunk. I mean, it's.
And that's, that's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for directions so that I know what to bring to you at the April meeting.
Yeah, I'm on board with that as long as we get some duty clarity on what's what because there's gonna be confusion there.
And I wanna know what we're gonna supplement them with, with more deals.
So is it safe to then kick off the summer custodial help and the summer mowing?
Yes.
Okay?
Yes. And then this will help with some of the insurance increase, correct? If we're eliminating some more of these other things up here?
Yeah. And keep the industrial tech reduction in the back of your mind this way.
And I'm fine if Brandon wants to keep the, if he thinks he needs the coach, I mean, he's the one that knows there. So if we, if we have to keep something else on that list, I mean, these are, these are optional. So, I mean, if he really would like to have that, I don't have a problem with that, keeping the assistant track coach.
I coached junior high track with me and just one other coach for, I believe it's three years and we never had any issues doing that with junior high because we're always at the same meet. So you have two people that are at all times.
Is there three now?
Junior high, three.
I could say eliminating show choir contracts right now, sure.
I would be fine with incorporating a quiz bowl into tag program.
My only thing is, are there quiz bowl participants that aren't in tag?
This year?
I can't answer that.
This year that were.
How are you gonna incorporate this, I guess, how?
That would be my concern is, you know, you do have to qualify for tag, so if you're not qualified for tag, can you still?
Well, I invited all of the kids who were on the tag roster and did not get four kids interested. So then I went to kids who teachers recommended that they could be good for quiz bowl and two of those kids said they would do it and they said, do you need somebody else? And I said, yeah, we really would like to have four. So they recruited two others. And, I mean, they, I asked teachers, these kids, they were okay, we go. But, I mean, the kids in tag did have first option.
Yes.
They were the only ones I invited to do it and I just said, no, 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 I'm busy.
I just don't wanna.
Right.
Take that away from having that as an option for all of our kids.
And it doesn't sound like it would be.
No, I told them even if they don't pay absolutely.
Okay.
I'm the one that told them, just tack it onto the tag teacher description and we'll do it that way.
To be fair, Barbara and I had this conversation last year and she was open to do it this year the same way and we just chose not to do that at that time.
Choir and quiz bowl I have now is still in.
Correct.
Still in what?
To take away.
To tinker away.
If we don't have large group speech, then.
Okay.
Junior high track, good, right? You got three on each team. And the marching band.
The first is okay with it.
And that doesn't mean three years down the road, we don't reincorporate it, so.
Like, if, if we don't have to, I mean, for Joe to do it as a volunteer, I think is a, is a really nice thing that he does, but we don't have to take away his pay, I don't know. That's just the one thought that I have.
Did you say that you talked to Mr. Wolf about it?
I, I listened and she was, she was very understanding.
Does that put a lot of extra strain on her?
She didn't seem to think so and like I said, Joe said he was gonna still step up and do that. He didn't care about the money, so.
I mean, I guess with the industrial tech with that.
Yeah.
I'm willing to pay Joe. I mean, because they got the summer camp, they've got, you know, there's probably what, three months.
It's a time commitment.
Yeah.
It's a coaching position.
Yeah.
I'm willing to keep that in there.
The marching band is pretty important, I think, for over the years here, so.
And I will say, I don't know what the total on it is, $1,900? No?
770.
There's approximately already with the change to wrestling cheer and me resigning from basketball, so we'll have a new coach in there. And my wife resigned from junior high basketball, there'll be a new coach in there, so they'll start on the new coach payday. We're gonna save approximately 30, $3,400 right there. So those, those savings are already in next year's budget that maybe we haven't talked about.
Right.
They're already in there. So there is $3,400 already being saved on that end.
So you could comfortably keep the assistant.
I would keep Joe, I would keep that assistant.
I just don't want him to do the same thing and not be paid if we happy about being two paid.
So he has the four, four of those remaining.
Am I taking the high school assistant track coach out of consideration?
Yes.
Okay? Leaving the junior high track coach in consideration?
Yes.
Okay? Alright, so just make sure we're all on the same page. Come your April meeting, you're going to see the maintenance director, you're going to see show choir, quiz bowl, large group speech and junior high track coach. Okay? That gives me the direction for April that I need.
And that still cuts enough to be able to.
Yeah.
Be over that 200, 200.
This all includes funding for one sub, as we said at the beginning.
One sub.
One sub.
That is built in and it's built in making sustainable cuts. So if you want it to continue, we have built it in so that it can be a regular part of your budget. Now, next time budget cuts come around, full transparency, that's gonna be one of the first things that comes up. But we have built the cuts in so that it is a sustainable part of your budget moving forward.
I guess my question, and maybe it's for another meeting and maybe not now, but with with that sub position, I mean, is that gonna be trying to split between high school and elementary or?
Well, the numbers is, I mean, it's gonna be getting more in elementary, but then high school's getting, if they're getting paid 20 bucks a session.
I mean, obvious, this is what I'm envisioning right now, not that this is what it's gonna be, but I would say if there's a need at the elementary, the coverage goes to the elementary first. And I say that because in the elementary, kids will sell on services when we pull people a sub. If there isn't a need at the elementary and there is at the high school, all needs go over to the high school. But I think it comes down to a choice, I think, for, for protecting the kids, I think the need is greater over there.
And then next maybe we choose, combine that.
We'll, we'll have a plan on that.
So that could be even more, you know, 35 or so thousand.
Yep.
I can tell you going forward, we know we've got about $30,000 increase coming for health insurance next year. So shoot that back in your mind.
Which is wild. I was wanting to chip away at these bottom cushions because I can help embrace a little bit of the state.
And I think you still, I mean, you gotta keep that summer help up there.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I can see the logic of that.
Absolutely.
You're looking at putting more responsibility on the custodians we have.
Right.
Give them the summer help.
Yeah.
The building back in shape.
And have somebody else mow.
A necessity because we've discussed about getting, you know, kids on the mow. We don't want things tore up or something.
We have someone good that's done it for the last few years.
We need a nice job, right?
And that's logical, absolutely. Okay?
Anything else?
I'm good.
Can I ask a question? So this goes to the SRO on that, those funds. So I know Brandon has talked about there being grant that could, will, may, possibly pay for part of that.
You're talking estate, yes.
So if that, if that funding comes through, that grant comes through, then there'll be some extra money in that.
At risk.
At risk, yes.
At risk funds. So then would you be willing to look at possibly like hiring Ashley for another day for a part-time?
Wherever we can use that.
Those are discussions we definitely have.
Those are some of the things that we could do with that.
It has not passed yet, it's on the calendar.
No, I know, that's why I say if, may, whatever, you know.
And if they split it and keep away the R and teachers thing and split the bill.
It'll go.
It would pass, it's just nonsense how it's rolling right now.
But no, that would free up some funds that we could have those discussions and everything.
You would think about that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, you know, while you mentioned Ashley, just I wanna talk a little bit about that ADA bill that was passed and was signed and is now the law going. Operational sharing is still a possibility under that. In some of the versions, it was not. So I, I don't have a lot of silver linings for that bill, but that is one of them because that is how we fund a portion of Ashley's time with us. So it, it is good that that is still in there.
Shows how it'd have to be the whole bill by then.
Oh, good, good, yeah, sure, you bet.
April 17th or whatever it is. Have every, have all things in your house.
A, B, C, D.
I have my marching orders.
Anything else?
Yep.
Go Hawks?
Go Hawks.
Okay.
Second.
Second off there.
Hi.
Alright, thank you guys.
Why do I print it out? I'm right here in the folder.
I see, you know, Cody's.
It's all just.
You know, but.
But we, we have to protect.
Yeah.
No, we're not complaining about where we're running.
You're not sitting proud?
Lyric.
You had one, you had Dennis Keel come. And spoke his piece.
No, I'm definitely.
Giving on a picture, fellas, and he hates to see taxes.
Post-teen.
And it's just.
Yes, that's a long.
And I did too.
I got, I got, you know.
Because you started going to. Alright, see you, Carrie.
From M to L.
I see.
See you later.
And he has a person that go through a side deal or something. And then you have to work with the others.
Well, bank one.
What's that?
I said, well, bank two.
Yeah.
There is a YouTube video of Dennis talking. I did broadcast it. When more, when he left, I just muted it for the next 30 minutes. 60 minutes came in and it was all. But it is after.
Alright.
Yep, when I go through that, I gotta go through that for insurance stuff.
See you, take care.
Yep.
See you, Sarah.
I'll see if I can add stuff to it. Like I said, I think we need to also maybe, you know, make sure we take a look at the elements.
Yep, I've got it here for you.
There'll be names there that we have to look at, but definitely that we wanna get on the schedule for.
Absolutely.
Tadok. See you guys.
Thank you.
No, you're fine. I'm just trying to do my part.
Oh, goodness.
We're meeting at 10 tomorrow, right?
Yes. Does that still work?
It might be a little after, but yeah, I mean, we're done testing at 9:45, 9:40.
Do you wanna move it to 10:30?
No, it's fine. It's just, they might be coming in hot at 10. Cause we're both running test sessions tomorrow.
Those, I guess that you gave me, are they all new?
No.
If you need more time, just text me, it makes no difference.
See ya.
See ya.
See ya, thanks.
See you 10.
I have 10 tickets ready for you.
Kelsey, thanks for being here.
Love to be on the bus.
Yeah, yeah. She's good, I bought her supper.
You wanna pick?
You're buying supper?
No, I bought.
Oh, I thought you said you were buying supper. Is it margaritas power night? Oh, no, that's tomorrow.
Is it margaritas power night? Oh, no, that's tomorrow, really.